Good evening. This is the first of two meetings for the town council tonight. And it is, the first one is a public forum. The other one is our regular town council meeting that will begin at or at or around 6:45. So it's June 12th, and this is a public forum on appropriations outside the annual budget. It is called as a special meeting of the town council and the finance committee. All of these meetings tonight, we use the same Zoom link. The governor has signed an extension of the acts related to the open meeting law extending them. This allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the council physically present at a meeting location, while providing the public with adequate alternative access to the meeting. This meeting is accessible in real time by Zoom, by phone, as a live broadcast on Amherst Media, Channel 9, and through Amherst Media livestream. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the quorum to order at 6:31. And I'll make, I'm going to call on counselors and please let me know that you can hear us and we can hear you. And then please mute your mic again. Shawnee Bell Millen.
Present.
Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Present.
Ben Griesmer is present. Andy Johanneke.
Present.
Annika Lopes.
Present.
Michelle Miller is absent. Okay. Dorothy Pam.
Here.
Thank you. Pam Rooney.
Here.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Andy Steinberg.
Here.
Jennifer Taub.
Here.
And Alicia Walker.
Here.
Thank you. Twelve of us are present tonight. There are six counselors in the town room, and we have two people in our audience. So Andy, would you please call the finance committee to order?
Yes, I call the finance committee meeting that has been noticed for this time on June 12th to order. And I note that all members of the council component of the committee have already been identified and are here. But we have three resident members who are also present. So I want to confirm that they can hear and we can hear them. So Bernie Kubiak.
Present.
Matt, Matt Holloway.
Present.
Bob Hagner.
Present.
Thank you. Um, there is no chat room for this meeting. If you have technical issues, please let Athena and me know. To make a comment or ask a question, please click the raise hand button, even if you are in the room, except for those of you that are in the audience. If technical difficulties arise as a result of utilizing remote participation, we will decide what to do with that at the, at the time it occurs. And we'll be monitoring connections as we go through the meeting. So as I mentioned earlier, this is a public forum on council order FY 24-07B in order appropriating the FY 2024 Community Preservation Act budget as required under Mass General Law, Chapter 44B. And it's being held in accordance with the definition of a public forum, Charter Section 5.6. With that, I'm going to call on Sean Mangano to give us a brief description, or if you will, discussion about what brings this to us today.
Thank you. So the CPA committee recommended that the council approve allocating $164,463 into a budgeted reserve for FY 24. This is one of the options available to CPA committees after they've met all their other requirements for specific eligibility categories. Typically, this action is part of the full slate of projects that goes to the CPA committee. So you don't usually see it pulled out separately like this. But this year, there was a project that was sort of on the fence, whether they were going to recommend it or not. And ultimately, they decided not to recommend it this year. So they're taking the funds that were, that were designated for that project or that they were considering for that project and moving it to a reserve for next year. The reason they do this is because by moving it into a reserve for next year, it allows the CPA committee to consider projects that may pop up during the year and get funding during FY 24, as opposed to having to wait till FY 25. So by setting this reserve up, it allows them to consider if a project pops up next year. Any projects that do, that they do recommend from these funds would still have to go to the council and be approved through the normal channels for CPA projects. But essentially, this just ensures that they don't lose this money until FY 25. It allows them to access it next year should a project come up that they, they want to act on. And I think that's it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that if counselors have questions, that they go ahead and quickly ask them, and then we'll open up for public comment. Andy, please go ahead and tell us how the finance committee voted.
I, I, that was actually why I raised my hand. There was a brief finance committee report that was submitted today. And I think our resident members don't have a copy, but it basically, after discussion and we talked about the issues that Sean already described and agreed that the flexibility is a value for the committee, that it's not an unprecedented matter and that this is an accounting, not a policy question from the perspective of the committee, because anything that would ever come to expend the money has to go through the full process of the CPA committee. And then the finance committee and then the council has to vote to approve. So there was a motion that was passed to recommend this order to the council. And it was passed for counselors in favor, one absent from the council members and support from the three resident members.
We are not voting on this during the public forum. It is on the consent agenda in the regular council meeting, starting at 6:45. So at this point, if there's no other counselor questions, I'm going to ask if there's public comment. The floor will remain open until at least six. Check my numbers. Athena, 6:46, right? Okay. Are there any people who would like to comment on this issue only? We will have general public comment later. But this is regarding the CPA money and putting it back into the CPA Reserve Fund. Should mention at this point, there's two people physically in the audience here at Town Hall. There's three people in the audience on Zoom, and I'm sure there's other people watching through Amherst Media. As mentioned earlier, this is a public forum with regard to the CPA funds that are, and it's an appropriation outside the annual budget. It's appropriating those funds back to the reserve so they can be used in FY 28. I mean FY, I'm sorry, 24. Skipped a few years. Looking for a public comment on this particular item only. There will be general public comment later.
We have a comment from Lauren Mills. Please come up to the microphone.
And Lauren, this is regarding the CPA funds. Thank you. Please join us. We limit public comment to three minutes. Please state your name and where you live and proceed. You have to make that turn green by pushing the button.
Okay.
There you go.
All right. Lauren Mills. I live in 12, South Amherst, 12 Long Middle Drive. And I wanted to make public comment at this time instead of the next meeting, because I feel like the CPA money that would go into reserve for FY 24. My point of coming and making public comment is to use monies that are not allocated specifically for any purpose be used for a cultural youth community center. And I know that financing that and taking steps to make that a reality will take a while, but I feel like if there are reserves for CPA funds, that that money would be prioritized for a cultural youth and community center. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Are there any other public comments at this time? This is with regard to this particular item, which is in fact a appropriation outside the annual budget, where we're taking CPA money that will not be spent immediately and putting it in reserves so it can be spent upon decision by CPA committee and their recommendation to the council and their vote of the council. So there will remain a process as there always is with CPA funds. And those, and those funds, by the way, also begin with proposals being submitted for the expenditure of those funds. Going to keep the forum open for one more minute. Andy, would you please go ahead and adjourn the finance committee?
I actually have to ask one question of the finance committee, and then we'll adjourn it if there's no motion. The purpose of having this forum as a committee meeting is so that if there's anything that's said during a forum that would cause a member to wish to make a motion to reconsider the recommendation of the committee that they have the opportunity to do so. So if there's any member of the committee wishes to make such a motion, please raise your hand. And if you, if I see no hands go up, then I'm adjourning finance committee meeting. Seeing no hands requesting to make any such motion, I adjourn the finance committee meeting.
Okay. And for the purposes of the public forum, the town council is adjourned, and we will continue immediately right on to our regular town council meeting. Okay. So it's still June 12th, and we are now doing the regular town council meeting. It's the second of our two meetings tonight, and it's using the same Zoom link. As I mentioned earlier, the governor signed the extension of the acts that allow us to do open meeting, such as we do, which is in the hybrid form. It allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the council physically present at a meeting location. However, a quorum of the council must be present while providing the public with adequate alternative access to the meeting. That means you can either be in the room with us, as we now have three people. This meeting is also accessible in real time by Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcast on Amherst Media, Channel 9, and through Amherst Media livestream. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the June 12th, 2023 town council meeting to order at 6:48. I have already checked to make sure that all counselors are here and can hear and be heard. And there, I just again remind you that there is no chat room. We have 12 counselors present for our meeting tonight and one counselor absent. We'll move to the announcements. We've listed the various town council meetings for the rest of the summer. We meet again at the end of this month, June 26th. We meet on July 17th and August 21st. The charter does require that we meet once a month, regardless of the months of the year. I also just want to call attention to the fact that committees continue to meet, and those items are posted up on the screen. Particularly CRC is meeting on Thursday at 11:30 in a special meeting. The finance committee will be meeting actually this coming Friday, the 16th at 1:30. And in the process, we'll then choose additional meeting times for the rest of the summer. Okay. I also want to mention that we have a broad array of events happening around Juneteenth. All of these are posted on the town bulletin board. They begin on June 17th at 10 o'clock, with particularly focused on Ancestral Bridges Foundation. On Sunday, there's a celebration of Juneteenth at the Amherst Cinema, particularly focused, if you will, on fatherhood, appropriately enough for Father's Day. particularly focused, if you will, on fatherhood appropriately enough for Father's Day. And on Monday is the town's celebration and it's the third annual Juneteenth Jubilee on the Common. And it will begin at noon. Again, all of the details for all of those events can be found on the town council, I mean on the town's website. We have no hearing tonight, so we're going to move to general public comment. And so let me just remind people, this is the only other general public comment for the evening. Okay, if you are physically here in the audience and you would like to make public comment, please make sure you have signed up with Athena O'Keefe. Okay, if you are in the audience on Zoom, we will ask that you raise your hand. And then we'll be rotating back and forth between people who are in the room and people who are on Zoom. You are welcome to express your views for up to three minutes. And the town council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during public comment. So with that, Athena, how many people do we have in the room who would like to make public comment? Okay, would you please call on the first person?
Lauren, did you want to make comment now? This is the only other comment period. Oh, okay, Vince, I think you're next. You're next. If you want to come up and make your comment, Vince O'Connor.
You can take the screen again. All right, please state your name and where you live and introduce us to what you've brought along.
My name is Vincent O'Connor, and you will find out during my comments what it's about. I'm here to renew my request that was made to the format town meeting that the a general bylaw be enacted that prohibits people, businesses, residences, and so forth from displaying unshielded lighting. Not only lighting that lights up the sky, but annoys the neighbors and diverts the attention of drivers. So unshielded lighting wastes energy. It does unnecessarily lit up, light up the sky. And as any of you who drive, it diverts your attention from the road. Think about driving. What do you look at when you drive down the road at night and there are unshielded lights? You're looking at those lights. And and that's not only a waste of energy, but it's also diverting people from the task at hand, which is to drive safely or pedestrians to walk, be able to walk safely. The other issue is streetlights. One of the primary reasons that residential neighbors, people are opposed to having additional streetlights or want the lights that are near them shut off is that unlike this headlight. Everybody familiar with headlights from automobiles? You have two on your vehicle. This is a left-handed headlight from a vehicle. And one of the things you notice is that the illumination is recessed deeply into the light. If you stand on the side of your vehicle, you cannot see the light. The light is focused to the front. And one of my concerns is that we we have streetlights that can be seen in the up in the windows of adjoining residences that are visible to drivers as they pass through the area. And not only that waste brings attention, but it fuels people to drive not absolutely in streets and pathways that are constantly technically lit. And the way to do that is properly deal with light. I could just say in the downtown, the downtown lighting, the old nineteen hundreds unshielded lights, well, specifically seen above in
Vince, we need you to Vince, please. Thank you so much. I'm sorry. No. We don't call, we don't comment. Shall we move to the audience?
Did you want to take someone from Zoom?
I'm sorry.
Did you want to take someone from Zoom?
Yes, Birdie Newman is the first person. She has her hand up. Please bring her in.
Hello, am I audible?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Awesome. Before I make my comment, my sound like went out on Zoom about halfway through Vince O'Connor's comment. Is that true for the counselors or is that just something on my end?
It was just something on your end.
Okay, great, great.
It sounds like it may have gone out for the folks who are remote, Lynn.
Oh, okay, it was recorded, however, so it will be available to others on the recording for the meeting. Yes?
Oh, amazing.
Okay.
I think the mic may have been turned off.
Oh, we we think the mic may have been turned off. I'm sorry. Perhaps Vince, you would send us your comments so that we can make them available. Okay. Birdie, please go ahead.
Okay, okay. Thanks for checking in about that. My name is Birdie Newman and I'm calling in from District Three to urge the council to vote no on the proposed FY twenty-four budget. I can't support a budget that continues to over from the police and under fund community safety working group recommendations such as CRESS and the DEI department. I'm eager to see the council put your money where your mouths are and create a new budget that reflects the town's commitment to end structural racism and achieve racial equity for Black residents as affirmed in a twenty twenty resolution. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for joining us, Birdie. We're going to now turn back to the audience and please come on up, Lauren. We're going to make sure the mic is on.
Hi, everyone. Lauren Mills, twelve Long Metal Drive, South Amherst, District Five. I have a pile of papers here, but I didn't print out all of the community assessment that was done through the Department of Health by UMass students. But I would encourage all of you to read it to see what it has to say about the health of Amherst. And you know that I have encouraged and advocated for a community center because I have three children in the school system. And as a parent, I am very just aware of the need for children to have a safe space, to have a a space that is identity-affirming in a sense that BIPOC youth need to have mentorship. They need to have places where they can, where they can learn about themselves and learn about other people in a safe way. And I would also like to encourage the town council to look up Eagle Eye Eagle Eye Institute, which is an example of a BIPOC youth organization that helps youth of color learn how to be environmentally friendly and and to learn outdoors. And they have a partnership with the Kestrel Land Trust. So I think Amherst is probably already aware of that, but there are a lot of examples that can be found. And I just hope that the town council and existing departments like the DEI department and even the CRESS department can find a way to bring more activities to BIPOC youth. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Lauren. And we're going to now return to the audience. Allegra. Defund, please come in and state your name and where you live.
Hello, am I audible?
You are.
All right, my name's Allegra Clark. I'm a resident of District Two. I like, Birdie, I'm asking that the council vote no on the proposed budget. I have two major concerns. The first, again, has to do with schools. I know that the school committee had proposed a higher budget for the elementary schools than the town had originally kind of allocated. And the amount was eighty-four thousand dollars. I I kind of see it as very disappointing that many members of council were out and about asking residents of town to give more money via taxes to support the new school building, yet we can't find eighty-four thousand dollars that was an additional, you know, extra surplus money coming from the state to fund some of the programming for our schools. I mean, I have a kindergartner at Wildwood. I have had the joy of spending a few days recently in the classroom with all the kindergarten students. And I was able to attend library class as well. And I think that it would be devastating to not have a library paraprofessional in the elementary school. And I think it would really affect all children's access to the library as a really important resource for their learning. So that is one thing I would like to say. And the other, again, is that I would like to see less money going to the police and more money going to CRESS. I am looking back at the CSWG's original reports and some of the wisdom there was that as CRESS grew, the police could shrink as the CRESS department took on more of the responsibilities that the police have kind of been saddled with as the catch-all service provider of community service or community safety services. I think that there has been a lot of positive things that CRESS have has already been doing, working with the schools and especially in in situations around transportation and getting kids to school, helping with, you know, folks who are staying at Craig's Doors and people who are staying outside, getting them into housing, doing wellness checks for seniors, and working with trauma-informed Hampshire County on the National Childhood Trauma Initiative. There have been many things that CRESS has done. And I think that if we allow them to flourish and expand to twenty-four hours a day, that will capture some of the heightened crisis times for families in the community that have already expressed disappointment to members of the Community Safety and Social Justice Committee that CRESS is not available twenty-four hours a day. So I really would urge you to rethink the allocation of funding from police to CRESS. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going back to the audience. Please come forward.
Vera Cage, please.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Vera Cage.
Is the green light on?
Yes, it is.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so I hope the chair will allocate additional time as I have two separate. One is my public comment and one is just announcement about an additional event on Juneteenth, Monday.
Okay, please.
So on Juneteenth, Monday, June nineteenth, from four to six P M, I am sharing the announcement that the Black Business Association of Amherst Area, along with Sankofa Gumbo, will be hosting a community celebration at Mill River Recreation Area, and the public is invited and everything is free for the entire family. The, I will move on to the, well, I just also wanted to share something about my own experiences here with this town around celebrating Juneteenth. I think that while a certain organization that just established their nonprofit a few years ago was instrumental in formalizing Juneteenth. I think that we should recall that Juneteenth has been celebrated since twenty-ten, first at Groff Park and in subsequent years. And that was done with the town of Amherst. The leisure services at the time was in collaboration with us. And that was a really wonderful free community event for everyone. And subsequent years, Sankofa Coalition, Youth Action Coalition and other groups have mobilized those efforts in subsequent years. So we've been doing this a long time and I just wanted to make sure that the town recognizes that. So moving along to my public comment around something I am very aggrieved about. I did submit a complaint with the Human Rights Commission. And the director Pamela Young did respond back with her findings last week. And I appreciate the time and effort she spent on pulling together all the exhibits and summarizing the facts as she was able to gather and discern. So and I also want to intersperse my my comment with a reflection on tolerance. I think I was a part of yesterday's amazing coming together of community at Mill River Recreation Area. It was so fabulous. Amherst Media was there to document and do conduct some interviews with folks about how they felt about that day. And for me personally, if, you know, a new person came and came and walked into our park, they would feel like, wow, you know, maybe that this is a community they want to belong to, right? Because it was very racially diverse. The children were happy, you know, there were so many things happening. And I I think personally, for once, food wasn't the highlight. Not to disparage my husband on the grill at Kate's, but so we can do better. But I really appreciated the programming that took place that day. And it just, you know, from the youth awards to the Race Amity Day to the Young Versus Old Tournament that has been a grassroots effort in this community forever. And so I think we need to pay homage to that and and to, I think, as the as the town takes leadership in planning events and executing events, that we uplift residents, uplift grassroots efforts and coalitions to be a part of the effort. So I think that's real community empowerment and engagement. I don't think people want certain things to be done for them. I think people want to be a part of something. So I just wanted to give that feedback. But back to my public comment about tolerance. I mean, I I appreciate seeing some of you. And it's it's difficult as a resident, as a person wanting to do social justice work to to see the person and the individuals that you are without your official capacity, you know, positions as town elected officials or town government representatives. But it's so it's hard. It's hard to have this tolerance, to be decent to one another and to be able to make our complaints and register our concerns, right? So back to my public comments, specifically, I am concerned that this town has provided unequal treatment to two businesses, one black, one white. So the Drake specifically was is able to this day. They're allowed to operate without a handicap accessible ramp permanently built onto their stage. Whereas Hazel's Blue Lagoon is a Black-owned business that the law was applied very much to their efforts around opening, right? They needed, before they could open, they needed to have this permanently constructed ramp to their stage. So it was a surprise to me to frequent the Drake one evening and our town manager So it was a surprise to me to, um, frequent the Drake one evening and our town manager attended. And I was able to pull him and ask the question about that. And he was able to pull the architect that was responsible for the stage. And he said, yes, you know, I, I talked with, uh, Rob Mora and he thought that, yeah, he agreed that it would take up too much space. So I was unsettled by that response and I did the complaint with the Human Rights Commission. I emailed each and every one of you and other members of the public, um, because it, it also speaks to my, in my complaint, the unfair distribution of ARPA money. Because the Drake, um, was able to operate with over three hundred thousand dollars of ARPA money that you all, we all, as a town, provided to them. And the Drake, the Drake, you know, is an entity of the Downtown Amherst Foundation, which is the nonprofit arm of the Amherst Business Improvement District. They share an executive director. And this town provided them the powers to, um, pull together the application, pull the committee that would allocate the funds and determine which businesses and how much funding they would get. So, you know, meanwhile Hazel's is, is disenfranchised. They are not provided a penny of ARPA funding because this committee that the bid put together, which is comprised of people unknown, um, said that they were not worthy and that they were not in compliance. So I see that my time is, um, coming to, or is coming to a close. But may I also just share just, um, I think some concluding statements. Tomorrow at eleven thirty, there is a disability, um, committee meeting that's taking place where the Drake, um, through Barry Roberts, the landlord, has submitted an application to the state to, to get a variance, um, approved so that they were able to operate, um, without complying with statute, the state statute. So that is, um, in the meeting packets, um, on the town website, the public can access that. And I also provided the attachments to your emails, um, to, to this evening. Additionally, so the state did cite them, um, for not being compliant. So I just wanted to say, you know, what does it take to operate in this town as a business, as a black-owned business that's not well-resourced? And would be relying on ARPA funding, federal and state funding to help them as a struggling business that has been impacted by COVID. Thank you very much for giving.
Thank you for joining us Vera. There are additional public comment, I believe, in the audience. Pat Anabaku, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Good evening, can people hear me?
We can, Pat, thank you.
Okay, so first I want to echo what Allegra said, I don't have to repeat those. And also what Vera has just said. So my name is Pat Ananibaku from Tamarack Drive, Amherst, a forty-year resident. I'm here tonight on behalf of, uh, my group, Black Business Association of Amherst Area. As all of you know, I have written to you all on several occasions about ARPA funds. And I, we were, we're still wondering what is going to take to allocate the rest of the two million dollars? Is it because this affects black-owned businesses? That is not a priority to right the harm that has been done? Because the existing businesses have not, uh, black-owned businesses, we did not receive any ARPA funds. And although the town manager has, you know, um, came to our meeting and, um, he has reached out. And I'm yet to still meet with him. And my members are still wondering, when is it going to, when is this going to happen that the black-owned businesses will get fun, uh, ARPA funds? Um, I know I said I didn't want to repeat what Vera said. But what we are looking here is corruption in our town, institutional racism. People who have access get our tax dollars. When we look at our budget, it tells a lot about what we value most. Dot, dot pack buildings. And yet BIPOC continues, continue to be, uh, marginalized. There is no youth center, no bi-cultural, uh, BIPOC cultural center, a safe place for us. So, um, do your job, please. I know serving on town council is a lot of time and work and I appreciate your time. But you have to represent people that you claim to represent. I do not feel that my two counselors represent me or my family. I just want to put it out there. I do not feel any much benefit of tax dollars in this town. It's not impacting me. We'll still have police, you know, full-funded police department. People are still calling midnight for mental health crisis. We don't have CREST program fully funded. What are we doing in this town? We do so much talking and celebration, but not much meat to people who are really suffering. We are not interested in uplifting the, the marginalized. Only if we are well-connected and when you speak up, you get canceled in this town. That's what happens. But I'm not going to stop advocating, stop pushing, unless if I breathe my last breath, I will continue to speak truth to the power. Please do your job, there is remaining ARPA fund. The existing black-owned businesses need the money too. Drake got three hundred thousand dollars for renovation and for expansion. And they're being, uh, praised for a success story. Why wouldn't they be succe- successful? Who wouldn't be successful with three hundred thousand dollars? And that's the, the federal ARPA funds. Okay, it's supposed to help people who really, really need the money.
Wrap up, please.
And, and they did not get it, thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Are there any other public comments at this time? Okay. Thanks. We're going to move on to the, um, Dorothy, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. When counselors have an opportunity to make comments, it'll be, there's counselor comments later on, okay? Is that why you're hand, okay. On the consent agenda, the following items were selected because they were considered to be routine. And in many instances, they have been voted in committee and the vote was unanimous for those attending. So I'm going to make the following motion. If you would like to remove an item after the motion, you let me know that. If you would like to have a little more background about the item, but don't necessarily want to stop us from voting on it, you can also ask for that as well. So the motion is follows, to move the following items in the printed motions there under and approve those items as a single unit. Eight D waiver of section four, six, seven, eight, and nine of the Town Council Policy on Making Recommendations for Town Council Appointments to Multiple Member Bodies for the Reappointment of Non-Voting Members of the Finance Committee. Nine B one, reappointment of Robert Hegner and Matt Holloway as non-voting members of the Finance Committee for terms to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And eleven A, approval of June fifth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Are there any items that people would like removed at this time? Seeing no hands, I seek a second.
Shane seconds.
Thank you. Then we'll move immediately to a vote. Shalony Baumil.
Yes.
Patty Angeles.
Hi.
Anna Devlin-Gothier. Lynn Greasmer is an I, Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Um, I, but we could not on Zoom hear Anna's vote.
It was an I, I apologize.
Anna just reinforced her vote as an I, thank you. Uh, Anika Lopes.
Hi.
Michelle Miller is absent. Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Thank you. There are no resolutions and proclamations this evening and there are no presentations and discussions. We will pick up where we left off last week with the FY twenty twenty-four budget orders. And while we had some discussion last week, because a couple of counselors were not able to attend, I want to make sure that both, all counselors have an opportunity to ask any questions as we go through each of the financial orders. This time we will be voting on them. So I'm going to place the order on the table, seek a second, and then look for comments. So the first one is to adopt appropriation and transfer order FY twenty-four dash zero four A, in order appropriating the Town of Amherst operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four as recommended by the Finance Committee Report of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three and shown on page eight of the motion sheet. Is there a second? Second from DeAngelis, okay. Are there questions or comments? As I mentioned last week, I'd like to recognize that many counselors were able to attend a lot of the Finance Committee meetings and participate in, um, the very rich discussions. So with that, I'm going to move to the vote, I'm going to start with Patty Angeles.
Hi.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Hi.
Lynn Greasmer is an I, Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Hi.
Anika Lopes.
Hi.
Michelle Miller's absent, Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Shalony Baumil.
Yes.
It is unanimous with one counselor absent. The next order is the one that particularly deals with capital. So to adopt appropriation and transfer order FY twenty-four dash zero five A, in order appropriating funds for a portion of the Town of Amherst Capital Program Equipment Buildings and Facilities as recommended by the Finance Committee Report of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three and shown on page nine of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Second, Devlin-Gothier.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to move to a vote. Anna, you're first.
Hi.
Lynn Greasmer is an I, and Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Hi.
Anika Lopes.
Hi.
Michelle Miller's absent, Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Shalony Baumil.
Yes.
Patty Angeles.
Hi.
It's unanimous with one counselor absent. The next is, um, the Order Regarding a New Fire Department Pumper Truck. It's a bond authorization to adopt appropriation and transfer order FY twenty-four dash zero six A, in order approving and authorizing borrowing to fund the purchase of a new fire department pumper truck. Bond authorization as recommended by the Finance Committee Report of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three and shown on page ten of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Second, Devlin-Gothier.
And let me just point out that this requires two-thirds. So, are there questions? Seeing none, we'll begin with, um, Lynn Greasmer is an I, Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Hi.
Anika Lopes.
Hi.
Michelle Miller's absent, Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Shalony Baumil.
Yes.
Patty Angeles.
Hi.
Thank you. Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Hi.
It is unanimous with one counselor absent. Uh, and the final FY twenty-four budget, um, authorization is the following. To appro- to adopt appropriation and transfer order FY twenty-four dash zero nine A, in order approving and authorizing borrowing to fund capital projects. Bond authorization as recommended by the Finance Committee Report of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three and shown on page eleven of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Second, Devlin-Gothier.
Okay. Are there questions regarding this particular one? Seeing none, we're going to move to vote. Uh, Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Hi.
Anika Lopes.
Hi.
Michelle Miller. Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Shalony Baumil.
Yes.
Patty Angeles.
Hi.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Hi.
Lynn Greasmer is an I, and that is unanimous with one counselor absent. I realize I stated something incorrectly, uh, earlier. The CPA motion was not on the, um, consent agenda. So we're going to move to that order. And the motion is to adopt appropriation and transfer order FY twenty-four dash zero seven B in order appropriating the FY twenty twenty-four Community Preservation Act Budget as Required under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four B, as recommended by the Finance Committee Report of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three and is shown on page twelve of the motion sheet. Is there a second?
Second, Devlin-Gothier.
The, pardon me Lynn, it should be June twelfth, the Finance Committee Report of June twelfth.
I'm sorry, thank you. Um, June twelfth, is that acceptable, Anna?
It is.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions with regard to this? I do have a question. Oh, I'm sorry Pam. Go ahead, please.
Is it, is it appropriate or possible to have a reserve category for CPA so that it doesn't necessarily have to get, uh, voted in this manner each year? If there's something that, that they want to defer, don't we already have kind of a catch-all?
Can I respond to that one?
Please, Sean, go ahead.
Um, so the CPA committee doesn't always decide to have a reserve. Sometimes they do and sometimes they don't. It sort of depends on the projects, um, each year that are proposed. The last few years, they decided to have a reserve, I think, two years ago, it was around five or six hundred thousand. This year, they were on track not to have a reserve at all. Uh, but again, this, this project was sort of on the fence. So typically, when the full slate of projects and the motions that come forward for all the, um, the specific projects come forward, it includes this reserve, so you never vote on it separately like this. So, um, yes, if there is a reserve i- in a particular year, uh, most likely next year, it'll be part of the, the full slate of projects, not separate like this.
Pam, question? And thank you for asking it because it helped me clarify, but the difference between this and the general vote, okay? Uh, are there any other questions regarding this motion? Seeing none, we'll move to Anika Lopes.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Shalony Baumil.
Yes.
Patty Angeles.
Hi.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Hi.
Lynn Greasmer is an I, Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Hi.
It's unanimous with one counselor absent. As explained to you earlier in an email, uh, the Finance Committee did not conclude their discussion regarding counselor stipends. And so that item is not being discussed tonight. It will come before the council on the twenty-sixth. And that is, that was items. And that is, that was Item C on our agenda. So with that, we are going to move to the proposed rescission and replacement of Bylaw 3.40, Snow and Ice. This is a first reading, and this is coming from GOL. And I am going to turn to both Pat DeAngelis and Jennifer Taub as Chair and Vice Chair.
Thank you. Bylaw 3.40 was included in a summary of bylaws identified for review by the Bylaw Review Committee in 2019. The review of those bylaws for future consideration was moved to the GOL by council vote. This and many of the other bylaws that were referred to us were reviewed in 2021 and again in 2022 before real action started to take place. We began an active review of Bylaw 3.40 in 2022 and have continued into this year. During meetings and discussions with residents, staff, and committees, including the Town Manager, the Director of Public Works, the Tree Warden, the Chief of Police, the Transportation Advisory Committee, and the Disability Access Awareness Committee, it became clearer and clearer to the members of GOL that the scope of the bylaw needed to expand to cover year-round maintenance of public ways by property owners. While the original language addressing snow and ice removal was retained in Section B of the amended bylaw, which is now with sec- removal of snow, ice, and other obstructions from sidewalks. Those other obstructions included vegetation, overgrowth, debris, and containers for waste falling that impede travel. To facilitate communication with property owners and residents, enforcement of the bylaw was moved from the Police Department to Inspektional Services. There were multiple reasons for this change. The primary reason was miscommunication between departments. Resident complaints were frequently directed both to the DPW and the Police Department with a similar result. Complainants who contacted the DPW were told to contact the Police Department, and those contacting the Police Department were told to contact the DPW. Having complaints addressed by one department by Inspektional Services places the responsibility in, in one department. And the other reason we are having Inspektional Services enforce this bylaw is because they're experienced in both giving warnings and ticketing due to their other work on inspection of buildings and residences, et cetera. If there are any questions, both Jennifer and I will be happy to answer them.
Okay. Jennifer, anything else to add?
No, that was an excellent report. Thank you, Pat.
And you went all the way back to the very beginning. Kathy?
Thanks for that report, Pat. I have a couple of questions, and I sent them in advance so that you, we could get responses. So this is, and just so we understand the perspective in looking not downtown, but at sidewalks around town. The sidewalk does not always abut on the property owner's property. So the trees and bushes may in fact be on townland, and it depends on how much the public way is, you know, how deep it goes. So what happens in that situation? You know, in terms of, I'm, I'm not on the snow and ice part, I'm on the, the branches sticking out in some way, there's overgrowth, and...
Please, Paul, be willing to clarify it, and why don't you answer the question?
Sure. So the question is, suppose there's, there's a sidewalk, and the tree that's overhanging it is actually on townland, not on the, the butter's land, then the town would be responsible for, for doing, for cleaning it up.
And that would be to, if a bush or something like that? Or, or is that, or is the property owner who's sitting behind this supposed to trim the bush that's sitting on townland? So it's a, there's a few places that I can see, see this, and having just learned where the public way is up in North Amherst.
Yeah. So for major tree limbs, I think the town would take that on, but I think bushes, it's oftentimes, it's the property owner who's planted the bushes, so they're the ones who'd be responsible for clearing that out.
Okay. So, so I, I think we just need to, I'm not sure how many of issues, things like this are there. If you go down North Pleasant, you'll see the issue on one side of the street. Then my second question is, what if the sidewalk is in abysmal condition, really bad? So for example, there is a sidewalk up in North Amherst where at some point, because they were doing a repair on a foam pole or something else, the asphalt is torn up, it's sticking up in the air, there's a hole in the sidewalk. I can't imagine actually shoveling it for snow and ice, let alone doing something else. And then there are a few other places where it's tree limbs growing up and underneath it. You know, a couple of the sidewalks, people who rode bikes, my brother and I, this going downtown south, said it was good we were on mountain bikes because it was very similar to riding off-road. So are there any, you know, I'm just, it's undue burden if the snow and ice is collecting because there's holes and, and rocky surfaces, so do we help the homeowner out here?
It is the responsibility of the town.
Please use your mouth, Pat. Lean into it, though. Thank you.
I'm sorry. It is the responsibility of the town, not the abutting property owner. Complaints regarding the actual sidewalk condition, et cetera, need to be reported to the DPW, and the homeowner is not then held responsible.
Okay, and then my, that's a great answer. You know, in terms of some of the sidewalks I've been talking about. Then the last is, when it's a state road, are the sidewalks part of the state responsibility, or the sidewalks the town responsibility and the property owner? I'm not quite sure. I know we couldn't get a crosscut to do a crosswalk on Route 63 without the state doing it, but that was not necessarily the sidewalk, so I just don't know whose sidewalk it is.
Well, I learned this too through your questions, so I'm grateful. The sidewalk, if it's a state road, the sidewalks are owned by the state, but the current bylaw does not differentiate the public ways by ownership. So the abutter is still responsible then for cleaning the sidewalk there. Is, these things have been in effect in the current bylaw.
I was going to say, for snow and ice, this is a long-term situation, or the trees and bushes are what's, the, the other stuff is, is what being, it's what being added with this one. Okay.
So it was fun to get answers to these, so.
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Anna?
Something I appreciate about the way this bylaw is written is that it relies on people being rational, and I appreciate that. And I, I think where I'm going, well, here's my question. So the, my interpretation of this is that the only notices served that start the clock on the 24-hour period are for vegetation, that there's no notice provided for, in terms of starting the clock. The notice does not start the clock for snow and ice. It's the expectation that it be 24 hours after its accumulation, which is, could possibly be up for interpretation, given sometimes the way that snow goes. So, so my question, I think that's my question, is, is how, how does the notice factor into the collection of fines for snow and ice if the deadline starts with the accumulation ending? And I, I assume this will never be a problem because everyone will be rational.
I think that's true, actually. I mean, yeah. It's, I think at that point, isn't kind of what's reasonable. There's just a little bit of snow versus if you really can't pass.
So for, for sidewalks, say the town does not, you know, plow them. So when, once the snow stops, a reasonable person would assume the snow is now finished, can go out and start to shovel. There's, the idea is to have that pathway shoveled within 24 hours.
Okay, so when the inspector then goes around because there's been a complaint, what do they use as their, like, I guess I'm asking, is there a metric that the inspector is going to say, great, here's a fine because it's been 24 hours, or is it?
Yeah, the inspectors are doing, first thing they'll do is ask you to, you know, pay attention to it. They're not seeking to issue fines, they're trying to get the sidewalk cleared.
Okay, and then second que- second question, is, which, to be fair, there's no processing here for warnings. It just says that the fine is delivered, so I want to just name that. And then the second question is that, is it a written notice? Is it a, it, it says that notice will be provided, and I'm curious if that is, how that, is there, is there a way that that is set to be provided? Microphone. Sorry.
Did you hear, did anyone hear any of that?
There's a complaint processed through DPW for vegetation?
Yes, yes, so that the, but they're not going to come and clean it for you. They're going to come and look at it, and again, we're trying to give warnings and say, hey, this has been, bicycles have been having problems, or pedestrians have been having problems, and you work on this. Really, things won't, I don't think more than a warning will happen.
I don't think so.
Unless it's then not taken care of.
Sure.
It's a house that we have to keep going into.
Paul has his hand up.
Yeah, I think the wisdom of the bylaw is that it places the enforcement with the inspection services. They get complaints all the time, they know how to handle them, they're experienced with it, they do try to resolve the issue first. They have a conversation, which is what you'd want in your, if it were your house, right? You'd want someone to come up and say, we've got a complaint, can you take care of this? And most of the time, it gets taken care of that way. And I think that's their, the way they, you know, our experienced inspection services folks handle it that way. So I think this is, that's why I think this is a smart thing for the council writers to put it into inspection services. They also have a really good method of tracking complaints and things like that.
I hear that, and I do trust our inspection services staff. I think for me, the idea of having the warning written in makes it stronger in terms of making sure that it's equitably applied. Not that I think that that would be a problem with our inspection services, but in terms of just a bylaw, people aside. And then my only other question, so I'm just naming that, I'm not expecting a change, I'm just naming that. And then the second question is, there was mention of waste hauling containers being placed in public parking places. And I was wondering how often that happens. It read as something that shouldn't ever be happening, that waste hauling containers are placed in public parking places.
And I can't answer how often that happens. That was information we received from Transportation Advisory Committee. And what we're asking is that if, wherever they're placed.
Sure.
Please bring them in.
Absolutely.
At the end of the day.
Agree with that.
Also, if, generally speaking, putting them in the street can be hazardous to
Absolutely.
People who are riding and stuff. So putting it at the end of your driveway, moving it slightly inward and stuff like that is what we're asking people to do.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Anna? Okay, Pam?
Thank you. I had a question about Section B 3 and the description of the vegetative overgrowth. So I'm trying to work hard to envision vegetative overgrowth of seven feet or less overhanging the sidewalk. So if it's seven feet, it completely arches over the sidewalk because it's usually five-foot sidewalk. And if it's less than, if it's less than seven, it couldn't, it's like, what do you mean by overarching? Do you mean it's seven feet above the ground? And you trim it to a height of seven feet above the sidewalk? Is that what that means? Okay.
I think it was bushes that have grown out over the sidewalk. Is, or not?
So, okay, so one foot of growth into the sidewalk is, is a barrier. I don't understand the seven feet, I mean, seven feet's like...
Mandy Jo has her hand up because you're on the committee. Mandy Jo, go ahead.
So, so the attorney asked us to change the language to that language, it might have made it less clear. The original intention said up to seven feet above the sidewalk, so meaning any overgrowth that, that comes over the sidewalk or obstructs the sidewalk up to a height of seven feet. If it's over, if it's growing over, if it's a tree limb over the sidewalk that's at 10 feet, we're not going to make you cut it, but if it's at like three feet, you're going to have to cut it, even if it's only one foot over the sidewalk, you know, like one foot into the sidewalk from the side, that seven feet is meant to be to a height of seven feet. Anything obstructing the sidewalk up to a height of seven feet would be in violation of the bylaw.
Thank you, that, those are the words I selected, too. So maybe, maybe rationality applies rather than, than attorneys.
I could say something, I really shouldn't say this, but I will. Does that mean seven feet when there's snow on it or not on it? So, just to be a little crass. Andy?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out one other anomaly of probably many that we're talking about because this is such a huge and varied town. There are neighborhoods that are not anywhere near the center of town, and they're not really in-town neighborhoods, they're residential streets scattered around. Where during the construction of the neighborhood, short sections of the neighborhood ended up with sidewalks, and most of the neighborhood ended up without sidewalks. And there's a, no continuity or sidewalks actually going someplace. And I, it, it's such a bizarre situation. As I looked at this, I decided that I would point it out, but not suggest any change whatsoever because I think that in the end, if in any of those anomalous situations that I'm describing, that problem arises, that the discussion with inspection services will ensue, and if a change needs to be made, then it will be made then, but to try and deal with it in the bylaw at this point didn't seem to make sense. So pointing it out, but not suggesting any change.
Thank you, Andy, and you made me realize that maybe we could encourage residents to have cooperative street cleaning in neighborhoods where there are these anomalies on the sidewalk.
Thank you, Kathy.
Now I have a new question because I didn't read the thing about seven feet. Downtown, you're not allowed to ride your bicycle on the sidewalk. When you leave downtown, you are. If you're on your bicycle and you're sitting up. You know, so I'm just wondering where seven feet came from is my question. Because they're actually, when you ride south of town on the only sidewalk that goes all the way down to Hampshire, there are overhanging branches that I'm not, I'm only a little over five feet tall, but I have to duck when I'm on my bicycle, and, and people bike it because it's safer. So I just, you know, as long as we're getting to this level of complexity in a bylaw, I don't know where the seven feet came from. So just thinking, thinking in terms of what we're trying to do, we're trying to make it easy to walk, not have people trip, and people not hopefully plant so near the sidewalk that their treasured bush is growing into it. And the town's going to take care of the trees. So I just, making it as clear as possible, or maybe it's going to take care of the trees.
If they're on, if they're owned by the abutter, the abutter is responsible for trees.
Okay, so, so you got my question on, you know, where it's legal to ride a bicycle. You know, where's, where do seven feet come from? Because it's, it's an odd number if it's trying to stop you from having to duck.
I think Mandy will be able to answer this better, but I believe it came from both the DPW and the Tree Warden, that that was information we received from them when we were having them look at the bylaw.
Mandy would like to comment.
Actually, I think I just made it up, and the Tree Warden and DPW person didn't say that that was a bad number. 10, 10 would probably be more logical with Kathy's indication. I was thinking about walking, so.
Well, I think in walking, we, there are basketball pairs who are at that height, but so far, they're not playing on our team, and, but Paul, you know. So I'm, I'm just saying, if the purpose is to really facilitate safe travel, don't forget bicycles where they're allowed.
Right. And kids riding bicycles. All right, Dorothy?
So I am confused. I thought we were talking about walkers and pedestrians on sidewalks. And, you know, the idea of bikes competing with pedestrians on sidewalks, I don't, is that really allowed in town?
As I said, not downtown, not, not downtown. Paul can tell you the rule, but it's not downtown.
The, the thing, the thing about greenery is that I've had a lot of complaints about areas... The, the thing, the thing about greenery is that I've had a lot of complaints about areas in my neighborhood because we have a lot of lovely green things. The idea is that a person should be able to walk past a property with a hedge and have the full width of the sidewalk in order to move their body. They don't have to tilt or do crazy things. And I, I, I think seven feet is fine. You want to make it 10 feet. But if we all of a sudden start adding, and sometimes it can be bicyclists, we won't have any kind of bylaw. This bylaw says who enforces it. They will make the decisions. There are lots and lots of things. We cannot anticipate all of the different variations of people and their property. And they will be making the, you know, they'll use their common sense. And I think that we should just let it go with that. So, thank you.
Paul, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so we do have multi-use paths in town and along 116 is one of them. In fact, I think North Hampton Road is going to have a multi-use path because there's not enough room for a sidewalk, a bike lane and, and travel lane. So sometimes the compromise is to have a multi-use path because I know some folks on Patac felt very strongly that you needed to have a place off the road for younger people to bicycle on. But the more, you know, better bikers will be on the road if they're looking to go fast. But we, you know, I, some people don't like the conflict between walkers and bikes, bicyclists, but I think that's the best compromise. And that's the state, the state has done that as well on Route nine.
Are there any other comments for this, since this will, GOL will take the input and come back with any other changes or not? And that will hopefully be on our agenda on the 26th of.
It will be, and I'm just going to encourage everyone to send us, send the questions directly to me and not.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments with regard to this? And let me just emphasize, this will be a replace, a rescind and replace. So we're going to be taking the old bylaw out and putting the new bylaw in. It will have the same number. It will have a different name and it will have some additional wording. Anna?
Yeah, I just want to extend my gratitude to GOL for tackling this. I know it's been on the agenda for a while and it's, it's looking good, so thank you.
I also want to thank the residents who came and touched with this. Maybe a special thank to Tracy Zaffian because she had given us a lot of really good information and support around this. So thank you, Tracy.
Great. Are there any other questions or comments on this? Then I'm going to actually jump for a moment to item 14, which is topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance of the meeting. We have such an item tonight, this is very rare. But we had a meeting earlier today and with Athena, and she agreed that this qualified. This is in relationship to the ZBA applicants. And it is in relationship to the possibility that once you hear the situation, the council may choose to vote to waive certain rules of interviews. So with that, I'm going to actually call on Mandy Jo and Pam Rooney for additional explanation of the situation.
Thank you. So, as the council knows, CRC has been working to make recommendations for appointments to both the planning board and ZBA for a long time. I tend to handle the communications for the planning board and the vice chair. Pam Rooney tends to handle, handle the communications for the ZBA. I just thought I'd put out, that's, tends to be the split. But we, a while ago, set the, we went, I don't have the dates in handy, but there's a process, the town councils has adopted a policy that requires us to go through certain steps to get to the interview and to make a recommendation. If we don't follow that process, or if we don't want to follow that process, we have to seek a waiver from the town council because it's a policy. So we have to follow the process. It has 10 different sections, many steps in the section. Some of them are, you have to post something on the bulletin board for the vacancy and then you have to wait 14 days before you can declare the pool sufficient. So we have made it through most of those steps. In fact, I think we are on step nine at this point for the ZBA recommendations. And the steps that matter for now are the fact that the CBA, the CRC special meeting to make, to interview the candidates, the applicant pool, is scheduled for this Thursday, June 15th at 11:30 in the morning. Under the policy, the meeting for that interview, that interview meeting had to be posted seven days in advance. And at the time it was posted, all of the statements of interest of all applicants needed to be posted with the posting of the meeting and in the packet. And they needed to be posted as a group. And at the time the meeting was posted, according to our council policy, the applicant pool closed. Applicants have to attend the interview and applicants have to submit a statement of interest. So if you had not submitted a statement of interest by the deadline and by the time of the posting, you are no longer considered an applicant under the council policy. On, so, so that means that our applicant pool closed shortly before 11:30 on June 8th, 2023. I put the exact time in the memo I drafted today. On Saturday, Sunday morning, June 11th at 7:09 or so AM, I apologize for the initial thing that indicated it was PM, a resident who had been considered an applicant at the time that we voted the pool sufficient to move to interviews, submitted a statement of interest by email to Pam and I, asking to be considered and recognizing that it might be too late, but asking to be considered an applicant anyway. And so that brings us to here. That was yesterday morning. I, as chair, asked to meet with Lynn and Anna and Athena and Pam to discuss what we should do, since there was a CRC meeting scheduled for 4:30 today and a council meeting scheduled for tonight. The council, if they wish to consider this applicant an applicant, needs to vote to waive the policy. That's the very complicated motion that's in the packet in that draft. There's a lot more information in that memo that talks about some of the communications that went out to all the applicants and everything. I can answer other questions. The motion itself, that if the council decides to make it, is very complicated, well, very wordy. I wouldn't say it's complicated. It's wordy because we wouldn't be only waiving the rule that closes the applicant pool. That rule, as I said, requires the statements of interest to be posted as a group. This one would be posted late. It requires that the chair or designee send out the interview questions seven days in advance. This applicant would receive them less than seven days in advance. So there's a lot more sort of other thing going on within this motion to ensure that all of the bases of the town council policy are covered if the council decides to waive the policy to essentially accept this person as an applicant in order to move towards interviews. And, and the, the one part of the motion I did make clear was that the waiver of these sections would not include waiving appearance at the interview meeting on June 15th. Section nine says, is the interview section, but it's the one that says questions need to go out seven days in advance. So I wanted to make sure that the motion was clear that essentially the only part of that section that would be waived is the notice of the interview questions to the applicant, not attendance at the group interview on the 15th. Pam, did I cover basically everything, or would you like to add more?
So are there questions as to what the issue is? Okay. Are there, yes, Kathy?
I just have a, a quick question to make sure I understand the, the rapid read that you just gave, Mandy, because I didn't read your memo before because I didn't know it was in the packet. We're waiving both when the SOI needs to get in. We're waiving the amount of time that the person would normally have had from the time they were in the pool to, to look at the questions. And are we also waiving, you've got interviews scheduled for the 15th? Are we waiving that date as well? So this person would be, or would they be, we're Monday, so the 15th is three days from now. They'd be part of the interview pool if they're willing to be interviewed with, is, is that correct? So they'd still be interviewed? So that's what, so the decision is these other steps that didn't happen, but it allows one more person to get in? And are they applying for associate or for full slot?
So Athena was kind enough to put the explanation in bullet points of what the motion does and doesn't do. So I think that'll answer the question. I have not read the statement of interest because I do not believe it is fair to read them ahead of time. It's also the reason the applicant's name has not been disclosed because I believe this decision at this point should be based on the policy, not who the applicant is. So I do not know whether this person, there is an interview question that the council, the committee has adopted that would ask what the applicants are essentially applying for or interested in, full membership, associate membership, or either. Presumably, the applicant, if taken to the interview stage and allowed to get to that stage, would answer the question at that time. We don't tend to ask it before we get to interviews, so I can't answer that question either. I hope that answers things, Kathy.
Yeah, this, this set of what it does and what it doesn't do is exactly what I was asking for. You got it. Thank you.
Okay, Dorothy?
I just wanted to say, I think that you have done due diligence and that sometimes we have all these rules and I understand why we have them. But I feel often they are in contradiction to life as it is lived. And we have vacancies. And the idea that we have, I, I have no idea who this person is, okay? But the idea that we have somebody who has had a chance to reconsider and said, yes, I do want to do it, when we need good people to be working on our committees. I think, I think it's, you're going about it correctly. You're, you're, you know, dotting all the i's, but you're making it possible. So I, I approve of your action. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments from councillors? Pat?
There's a way in which I agree with Dorothy. And there's a way that I'm concerned, that maybe I'm channeling Counselor Schwartz. We had a process in place. We had a mishgosh happen the last time around for Planning Board or ZBA. I think it was ZBA. A person sent in their responses and they were read. They didn't attend the interview. And there was a lot of resentment when that person wasn't selected. So I'm a little concerned. As a rule breaker frequently, I, I understand that this waiving it, it doesn't break it. It says that we can let go of this. But I'm feeling uncomfortable about how many times we're going to do this. And I, I don't know. I'm thinking about what you and I were concerned with because we were asking for waiver around Finance Committee. Is it a one-shot deal? Or are we going to change it every time there's a glitch? And, you know, or on the part of an individual, or a glitch on the part of the committee, or? And I don't, I don't know even how I'll vote on this. I'm really just trying to figure out for myself. What is this? What is the process if it can, if? What is the process? And maybe it is that we really need to relook at our process. I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
Anna?
Yeah, I think, Pat, I, I understand where you're coming from. And in reading the memo, it talks about how it seems like there were, there was a freak tech circumstance out of this person's control. And so for me, that feels like a valid reason to waive in this, in this circumstance. But I do hear you. I mean, I think, and, and to Dorothy's point, I agree. We have processes and we give ourselves leeway to waive those when the situation calls for it. And I believe the situation does call for it based on the circumstances.
Okay, are there other comments? I'm, Mandy Jo?
I'm speaking not as CRC chair at this point, just my own thoughts. I actually still don't know how I'm going to vote either. I, I wanted to put out there, when the council adopted this policy, I think this seven-day requirement for posting of the interview meeting with the list of names was discussed a lot. Is that too long, right? Open meeting law only requires two days, not seven. And, and do you close the applicant pool at that time? When do you close the applicant pool? And I, I remember some discussions about making sure the applicant pool closes at least by the time, and by the time the names are published so that there can't be a situation where names are published. Someone sees those names, someone reads the SOIs and then says, oh, wait, I, I'd rather it be me than them. Now, I want to say, I do not believe this is the situation. And I think I can say that because the person that we're dealing with, even though I have not disclosed names, was an applicant until, and considered an applicant up until the applicant pool closed because the statement of interest was not submitted at that time. So this is not someone who saw the list, submitted a CAF, submitted an SOI after that list. But I wanted to put that information out there of, you know, when thinking about waiving policies, what type of precedent might it set? And knowing what we're getting into if we are going to waive. As I said, I don't know which way I'm going to vote because each time is a unique circumstance and I think does need considered on its own merits and basis and with all of the, you know, all of the information that applies to that one versus just a generic, yes, we do, no, we don't, in this situation, we do or don't without, or this policy, this part of it, we're willing to waive, this part of it, we're not, right? And so, you know, I, I don't know what, what I'm going to do, but I thought I'd put that out there.
Alicia?
Thank you, Lynn. So I, when I think about policies, the, the most challenging thing is that they don't always allow people to be humans and to have human experiences. And so I do appreciate this request. I just have one question and it doesn't necessarily have an impact on my, my vote, but I'm just wondering what was the size of the applicant pool?
So at the time, the, the committee voted the applicant pool sufficient, our vote was actually, we declared the pool sufficient to move to interviews for full membership, for recommendations to the full membership, but not, but potentially not making recommendations to associate members. To give a background of that, and then I'll give you the size. We have two impending vacancies for full members of the ZBA out of five, out of a five-member board. And there are four impending vacancies for associates. Associate memberships are one-year terms, so there are always four impending vacancies. So we have six total vacancies at the time. At the time, we voted the pool sufficient to move to at least recommending the full membership, interviews for the full with considering the others. There were five applicants in the pool. It is public knowledge right now. The number has been amended. On Thursday, when the notice was posted, there were five applicants in the pool. As of today, there are four applicants in the pool going to interviews. One of those four, one of those five that was posted on Thursday has since withdrawn and that meeting notice has been updated to indicate that withdrawal. So we are currently sitting at four.
Alicia, is there further questions?
No, that's it. Thank you.
I was actually going to make a comment earlier. I had my hand up, took it down, I wanted Alicia to go next. I, I really appreciate the fact that we need to be human and, and we do. This candidate evidently was in the pool and missed the deadline. It's not as if they came out of nowhere and now they're asking for an exception. And I would hope that as a council, we can be human. That's it. Further questions, comments? Okay. Athena, do you have the motion? Because I'll try to make it, or maybe Mandy Jo, you'd like to make it.
Athena's going to put it up. I drafted something that might cover everything, so that's the motion I will read. So I, I moved to waive sections seven and nine of the town council policy on making recommendations for town council appointments to multiple member bodies. To A, reopen the applicant pool for the impending ZBA vacancies that closed at 10:32 AM on June 8th, 2023, so that the applicant pool includes individuals who submitted both a CAF and a statement of interest prior to 11:59 PM on June 11th, 2023. B, permit the late posting of applicant statements of interest and not as a group. And C, permit less than seven days' notice of the adopted interview questions to all applicants. And two, direct the CRC chair and council clerk to cause the meeting agenda to be modified to list any additional applicants and to post any additional statements of interest. to list any additional applicants and to post any additional statements of interest in the packet and attach them to the meeting notice by 11:30 a.m. on Tuesday, June 13, 2023. And three, to direct the CRC Chair to send any additional applicants the adopted interview questions by 11:30 a.m. on June 13, 2023. Provided, however, that any additional candidates meeting this criteria that cannot attend the group interview scheduled for June 15, 2023 at 11:30 a.m. by Zoom shall not be considered applicants for the impending vacancies that the June 15 meeting is intended to make recommendations to fill.
Second.
DeAngela's second.
DeAngela's second to that one. Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Kathy?
I am going to support this and I thank you for the very clear background memo on this. My only question is, is for afterwards. So you, if this person is able to make the interviews, you will still have vacancies. If at this point, the person can't make the interviews, you'll only be interviewing the four people who you've already set up. Since you have six slots, are you proposing to reopen it at some point is my question? You know, so it's just a question looking forward. I have no problem voting in favor of this motion. So it's just anticipating that it's Monday night and presumably the applicant, well, this has been public for a while, understands that there's an interview set up for Thursday, the 15th, yeah. So I'm just looking for what to do because Alyssa, as Alyssa's question pointed out, we will still be short, although in the past, we haven't always filled all the associates. And in the past, before the council, they didn't always fill all the associates. Yeah, thanks.
So if I may answer, I emailed the applicant this afternoon in response to that email to indicate what was happening tonight and, and let the applicant know what was going on and would, and informed the applicant that I would let them know after the vote tonight what happened. But I also included in that email that if the council chose to waive the lateness of it, that they would still be required to attend the interview. At this time, I have not received an email back one way or the other. So presumably, they've been on all communications, as I indicated regarding interview dates and everything, and I have not heard that they cannot attend it. But I have made clear that, that, that requirement would still be in there, even if this was waived. To answer your next question, I think CRC, depending on how many appointments it chooses to recommend, and then depending on how many appointments are actually made by the council on the 26th, would go back to confer to see at what time, if any CRC reposts the bulletin board notice to seek applicants again for what at that point would presumably be actual vacancies. We faced this situation last year and I think we waited a couple of months because it was just, and then we aimed to appoint by December 31.
Thank you. That answers my question, including that the, the person is aware of the interview. Yeah, thanks.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we're going to move to a vote on this. And I'm going to begin with Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Alicia Walker.
Yes.
Shalini Baumell.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelo.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Lynn Greisman. Aye. Amanda Jo Hanneke.
Aye.
Anika Loebz.
Aye.
She unanimous. I also want to, I'm sorry, with one absent, thank you. I also just want to say, this is the kind of thing that the 48-hour rule is meant for. And to get to do this tonight and do it as rapidly as we did is a credit to this council. So thank you and to everybody that brought it forward. We have already done our appointments and we're moving on to committee and liaison reports. CRC, Amanda Jo?
I, I think I've, basically you've heard enough from me today. Yeah, I, I will just say that CRC did the interviews for the Planning Board right before this meeting and made recommendations that will be in a report for the council meeting on June 26th at the next council meeting.
And do you anticipate similarly having recommendations for ZBA?
I anticipate that we will have recommendations for ZBA on the 26th, too.
Thank you. Elementary School Building Committee, Kathy?
There are three meetings this week of the Elementary School Building and its subcommittees on June 14th, Wednesday at 9:00 in the morning. The Building Subcommittee will be meeting and the list of the topics is, is in the agenda. And there are some materials that show you some of the, these are detailed design decisions about porticoes, about overhangs, about color schemes. That's, we're not doing a major building redesign at this point. Thank goodness. At noon, it's the Site Subcommittee. And it will, it has on the agenda, the whole list of things we've been talking about, playgrounds, fields, the layout of bus and drop-offs. And for those of you who have attended any of them, I've encouraged them to put at least one bicycle on the pictures so the people can see there will in fact be bike racks. And that's at noon. These have been posted as Subcommittee, but also Full Committee. So any member of the Full Committee who wants to attend can attend them. So, and I, I know a few counselors have come to different pieces. We are posting the earlier materials that were discussed, but they had, the designer has not given me. There were some substantial revisions of thinking, particularly around playgrounds, that came out of meetings with staff, so they'll be ready for those on, on Wednesday. We don't have those revisions. And by the way, the other thing, it's not just playgrounds, but for the school itself, there's outdoor learning opportunities, canopies, there's gardens for the students. So it's that whole layout of use by the school that isn't the community fields. But there were also meetings with the athletic teams, so some of the discussion will be the community fields. Then on Friday at 8:30 in the morning will be the Full Committee, which will, all of these subcommittees are just recommendations. So you will be hearing what has been discussed, including what's being discussed. This is leading up to the design team having enough to go before the Conservation Commission and for how we're using the land with wetlands and other issues around what things will be growing there and, and before the Planning Board. And I, I want to just want to say one other thing on what phenomenal school staff we have working in our elementary school. The person who's on the outdoor learning and on plants asked to see the plant lists and knew already which were invasive species, which weren't, and knew who was growing them locally with local pollinators. It was amazingly impressive who we have teaching our kids. She was fantastic.
Alicia, you're also on the School Building Committee and I believe you're on the group that's doing the outdoor work. Do you have any additions?
No, I think Kathy covered everything. We didn't have a meeting last week, so our next meeting will be this week as well. So I think everything Kathy said was right on track. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, Finance Committee?
Yes, you have previously in this meeting heard from Lynn that the Finance Committee did not make a recommendation yet regarding council or compensation, but we're well aware of the deadline and had a very healthy discussion last Friday. And we'll continue the discussion this Friday in order to make a recommendation for the 26th. It was a really very complete conversation. I think that we had the benefit of having one of the two cosponsors as a member of the committee, so that that member of the committee was able to make a complete presentation of the reasons that the proposal was made and got into the questions about the timing in which it would be done, if it's done. There were questions about the budget consequences. There was questions about the political concerns that, and policy concerns that might have. So we summarized where we were at the end of that long conversation and decided to hold off partly because of the, we were reaching a point where we were losing members and partly because it turns out that last Friday, when we scheduled the meeting, we didn't know it was the day of the annual employee picnic. So that as a consequence, we were meeting without staff, so we could not ask staff questions. So those are all of the things that are there. There is material that you might find interesting if you want to go looking for it in the Finance Committee packet for last Friday's meeting. And I'll leave it to any other members of the committee if they want to supplement further.
Are there any questions at this time of any of the people who've made their reports so far? Dorothy?
I just want to express my unhappiness. I tuned into the Finance Committee for a discussion of compensation. And then when I heard that you weren't going to have the discussion because of the absence of members, I left the committee only to find out that you did have a big discussion. And I, I guess part of that is when you come in as a, as just a viewer of a meeting, you're anonymous, nobody knows you're there, you can't talk to anybody. I, I just kind of wish that that had not happened because I really had wanted to be there for that discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Dorothy, I just want to correct it. There was an announcement made right at the beginning in a second that we were starting that discussion at 1:30 to allow one member to be there. So we, we actually chatted among ourselves, making sure that the proposer could be there. So it was announced, so I'm sorry you missed it, but it was announced that we were going to come to, that was the discussion of the day. We postponed the discussion of the third quarter because we didn't have financial staff there and we dealt with the CPA pretty quickly. So it was made, it was stated pretty clearly, but if you came in like 15 minutes later, you wouldn't know we were waiting till 1:30. You know what I mean? We, we literally had a, we're going to start this discussion when a member who couldn't get there till 1:30 could get there.
But, but I, I heard Andy say you weren't going to have the discussion, so I, you know, it's true, it's true. I wasn't there when the meeting started, but I'm just saying it was a moment of not, not good communication. And we're trying to, and I noticed, by the way, that when I tune in to meetings and some meeting people do read who's there. I wish we could see the names of who's there and I wish if not, we could have, the names could be read. Fewer and few, and people are tuning into meetings. I mean, it's almost nobody's there anymore and, and there's lots of reasons why. So I, I think we have to, to be more aware of that. That's it. Thank you.
GOL, Pat and Jennifer? Pat?
Not going to add to what we talked about with snow and ice. And I will be giving a full report at our next council meeting about the work we've been doing. And I'm not prepared to do that tonight.
Great. You don't want to talk about the great progress we made on all those other bylaws?
Do you want me to really?
No. Really don't. Jones Library, Anika and Paul?
Yes, so at our last meeting, we saw brick siding and slates. And we, it was very nice to see how the architects are really doing their best with what they have to work with to stay within the, in compliment, rather, the original design of the existing building, while not, while trying not to fight with it. And we are expecting a financial update coming with our, our next meeting, which is on the 15th. And I believe some of those emails have been sent to the council already. Paul, is there anything you would like to add?
Paul? Paul was not listening. Is there anything you would like to add to the library discussion?
No, it was an in-person meeting. We had people in the audience and it was, so it was a good meeting. And it was important to have the meeting because we were looking at bricks, as I mentioned.
I remember a similar meeting when we met at Fort River to look at the siding for the options for the building. Okay, TSO, Anika and Anna?
Our next meeting is Thursday, 15th, and our agenda items will be streetlights and waste holler by law, 7:00 p.m. this Thursday.
Okay, are there any liaison reports? Jennifer?
Sorry, I had trouble getting my hand up. So just very quickly, the Housing Trust met last Thursday, June 8th. And Tim McCarthy, the Executive Director, fairly new, maybe six months, of Craig's Doors, came and made an excellent presentation. So I don't want to even try and summarize it because it was so good. But I would urge everyone, if you can listen to the recording on Amherst Media of the June 8th Affordable Housing Trust meeting, it's, I think he was one of the first, it's, it's at the beginning of the meeting, so you don't have to really, you know, go through it for too long. But it would be well worth everyone's time to listen to his terrific presentation on Craig's Doors and just really, the, just policy and his thoughts around the issue of people that aren't housed and what, you know, all of us, all municipalities can do to address that. It was very thoughtful and thorough. Also, I mentioned it, I think at the last, last Monday, but, and I, I believe you've all received notices from the Housing Trust, but on June 20th, next Tuesday, from 6:30 to 8:30, the Housing Trust, together with the Board of Health and the Human Rights Commission, and I think CSSJC perhaps, are holding a listening session in the Bang Center. So that's in-person, it's a listening session from 6:30 to 8:30 on Tuesday, June 20th. And just lastly, J, John Hornick gave a legislative update and the Housing Trust did vote to send in a letter supporting Senate Bill 869, which is proposing that some limitations be placed on what landlords and real estate agents can charge for obtaining an apartment. So there would be some, you know, limitations or policy around the first month's rent, last month's rent, a month's rent for security deposit, plus perhaps broker's fees that really make it very difficult for people to obtain housing. So that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Dorothy?
CSSJC is still very concerned about a youth center and a cultural center. And I just wanted to state support for the efforts for a youth center. I think the event that was held at the Mill River the other day showed that we actually have some incredible young people in this town. And I think that the older ones do need, you know, from middle school, high school, need to have some additional recreation opportunities. I, I don't have any idea how we're going to do this, but I just want to say that CSSJC is still very interested in pursuing this and I share and understand their interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports? We've proved the minutes. Paul, do you have any other updates you'd like to provide?
Sure, I'd just like to mention a few things. One is the DPW is working on getting some projects started that you had previously approved the funding for. One is the Centennial Water Treatment Plant. They've met with the town officials in Pelham and that's getting ready to move forward. The Gravity Belt Thickener at the Sword wastewater treatment plant is getting ready to move forward as well. And they're about to put out another contract for paving, additional paving. And so that should be published pretty soon. I want to build on what Barry Gage mentioned about the Race Amity Day, the, the human rights awards and all that, that happened on Sunday at Mill River. It was a spectacular event. The basketball was really highly energetic, a lot of people there. And, and I think the food was really terrific. So. So but it was it was it was, you know, one of the highlights and a real community gathering. So and for the counselors who are all there, so really appreciate it. Everybody appreciate you being there as well. The Crest Department is doing amazingly well. And I'll talk more about this, but you know, they've been, they were invited to the International Town gown Association to talk about what they've been doing. They've been invited to Washington C to a fairly high level, a conversation among other responder groups. They're making connections. They're known throughout the country for the work that they're doing. And we've just learned that we were admitted into the Kennedy School Governance Performance Lab as one of the cohort for this year, which is a real highlight for us. So a lot of effort put into applying for that. So just and they're uncovering a lot of things, you know, that there was, the initiative was there. And we always recognize CSWG, but these things are developing and changing and and just we were just so fortunate to have a strong team. And today we were talking about, we've maintained pretty much our whole staffing for the entire year. And what we're finding, talking to other communities, is that turnover is a big thing. You know, people come and then they they burn out or they find it's not the right thing. We had we had one turnover in our whole staff this entire year for the responders. So what they're doing is terrific, and I think we all know that. But I think we can also say that to them as well. And the last thing is, one of the things that, and I agree with you, Jennifer, Tim McCarthy did a terrific job at the Affordable Housing Trust. Boy, the depth of his knowledge and his compassion and how he sees things is such an interconnected thing. One thing he did mention at that meeting is that the Craig Stores is going to be closing down the University Motor Lodge as a shelter. They're going to be relocating to the Econo Lodge in Hadley for lots of different reasons. And so that's going to happen. And I think they're expecting that to happen this weekend. So you'll see the University Motor Lodge sort of draw it down. They will maintain the congregate shelter at the Unitarian Church, or no, the Lutheran Church. And so you'll see some changes. And if you remember, Econo Lodge was the one that Valley CDC had purchased in anticipation of trying to put affordable housing there. They were turned down by the town of Hadley. This sort of overnight housing, which is akin to a motel, is permitted under their zoning. So that's why they're relocated, that's one of the ones they're able to use that building for.
Dorothy, you have a question?
Yes, I was very excited when I read that. The Motor Lodge, I want to know how many apartments it had, and I believe it was primarily women. I'm assuming that the number of of apartments is much greater at the Econo Lodge. Can you give us any figures on that?
Yeah, I don't think it's much greater. They only have the first floor of the Econo Lodge. I think that's the only thing that they're able to use. And I'm not, I think it might be an ADA issue, but I'm not really positive about that. So I think it's probably about the same number of units.
Thank you. Thank you.
Pam?
Similar question, but why, why, I mean, I live right around the corner from University Lodge and it's never been an issue. It seems to be smoothly operating. Was there a driving factor that it was no longer functional for them?
No, I think that was they they had better facilities at the Econo Lodge and less money.
And is there public transportation there?
Yes, there's buses.
Okay, so that they
And and one of the things they noted is that it's closer to Northampton. For many, many of their residents want to be in Northampton, not just in Amherst, so.
But I also know they use the Survival Center. Okay, all right. Pam, anything else? Yeah, please, go ahead.
Okay, just two things quickly. The in our agenda, it's it still says channel 17 for Amherst Media, that needs to get corrected.
It is, it's incorrect.
That's what I just said.
It's channel nine.
That's what I just said, it needs to be corrected. And secondly, could we have maybe two copies of the agenda in the back of the room as we used to do with planning board? So that folks who are now coming in person actually can look at our agenda? Thank you. Would you like me to do that?
I would like that, that would be good. It was actually mentioned during public comment recently and does make a lot of sense. Anna?
Paul, is the Econo Lodge, do you know, and I apologize, I I will go back and watch the meeting because I really appreciate all of the the work our new Craig Stores director is doing. Is the Econo Lodge plan a long-term plan for Craig Stores? And if so, does that impact? It's obviously a different type of shelter setting or housing setting. Does that impact any sort of partnership between Craig Stores and a behavioral shelter in Amherst in the future?
Well, Craig Stores is operating both, both locations, it's just a different location. So it's in terms of long term, I think we'd have to talk with. I've not had that conversation with Craig Stores about what their long-term goals are for that that building.
Thank you.
Alicia?
Yes, thank you. And so I have the same question about transportation. Because one of the really great things about the Amherst Lodge is that it was right downtown in close proximity to the Survival Center and on the free bus route. So like Hadley going to the Econo Lodge is actually not a free bus ride. And so I'm wondering how we expect our friends who are experiencing homelessness to be able to afford to be taking the bus to and fro had from Hadley?
So again, this is a decision by Craig Stores. And the town has provided funds so that every guest can get a free bus pass every day.
Alicia? Kathy?
Lynn, are we at general counsel comments?
Not yet.
Okay, I'm taking my hand down.
Are there any other comments or questions of Paul? All right, we're going to move to counselor comments. And I don't have any at this point, so let's just move on to future agenda items and counselor comments. Dorothy?
I wanted to comment on the question of the ARPA grants. And what's really striking me is that we have ways of doing things that work and that are useful and we're used to about it. But it ends up with certain people having more opportunity. And one of the, in all the comments, one of the things that really got to me was that the map for the Hazel's Plu Lake Glen was not as detailed as that for the Barry Roberts property. So, you know, people who have things, who build a lot, who have money, have staff that they're used to, that they work with. And when they need to fill out an application, they can do a fabulous job. But if we want to extend and enlarge the number of people that are involved in doing business, if we want to encourage new business, we have to understand that, you know, it it was kind of like not a fair contrast that was going on in terms of the inspecting and the and the ramps. I understand the feelings of unhappiness. I don't think that it was, and this is just personal opinion. I don't think it was racism that monitored that that led to that. But I think it was just being used to the way of how we do things. And that way, things tend to be done by people with power and money and who they're usually white. Because if we don't find a way to to change, we're not going to get better. Because we can't have diversity, we can't have equity, and we can't have inclusion unless we reach out and are more understanding and offer more help to people who are trying to enter the room. And I think one of the problems is that we don't have a town economic development officer. That would be a person paid for by the town, who would theoretically be, you know, as we are all theoretically, neutral and fair and would look at things, you know, from that point of view. We've saved money by having a private profit-making group do the work. And I know they have done tremendous work. I do not in any way fault the work that they have done. But I'm saying that if we want to talk about how things turn out and how things appear, that wasn't a good idea. Okay? And that if we, and I know we're always trying to deal, do more with our money and our budget. But we have to have a town economic developer so that we can avoid situations where it looks as if things are not fair. And that person would be, I think, more tuned to going beyond the way we always do things, which has ended up with basically a white power structure. That's really what I my my comments today. So I hope that we can move forward and be more inclusive and be more helpful to people who want to join in our business community.
Thank you. Kathy?
I I may make a comment that just takes off on Dorothy, then I'll do what I was originally going to say. There are resources and they have been offered, Dorothy. UMass includes a help you do a business plan, helps you do planning, and those have been here. If you look at the list of people who got grants, some of them are teeny tiny. And there was help in applying. There was also a lot of money beyond ARPA that was brought into this town. So it's not just a one-person job, it's it's a lot of difference. So I'm not disagreeing that for startups, they need, they need guidance, including do you have a feasible plan to be here tomorrow? But what I wanted to just say two things. One was a, I attended a meeting this afternoon, actually, it was a a community gathering at Mill River. Paul showed up as well, of something called Amherst Neighbors. And if people aren't aware of it, they're an amazing organization. It's all volunteer, you know, with some people who are coordinating. They are up to 90 requests a month. And well on their way of, they had 800 last year, they're well on the way of doubling that. So it's an organization to keep our eyes on when we think of a way people get involved. And it was a fabulous gathering. And Mindy Dom, I don't know how she does it, but she showed up. I mean, she's such a supporter of the town. Then the other one I want to do is just to give praise to DPW. We had in North Amherst, some people very upset because suddenly trucks appeared in front of their house and piles of dirt appeared. It seemed like a whole new sidewalk, and they had no idea what was going on. And Guilford, head of DPW, came out with maps, talked to everyone, talked about what the plan was. And at today's event, a couple of the people that were most upset said it was a really good thing and they were thankful for it. So we have a very responsive staff. And they were extremely pleased. So I just want to, I I wrote Guilford a note, but he went over and above. This was 5 o'clock and he stayed to talk to everybody with people who started out not being happy with him but left feeling that they'd been heard. So thank you, Paul. It was really a terrific effort on his half.
Alicia?
Thank you, Lynn. So my request was going to be that we add the discussion about ARPA as a future agenda item because I think that that's something that we all seem to be interested in having a deeper conversation about. And I would like that to be added as an agenda item, like as soon as it can fit onto our agenda. And and I just wanted to state that as non-black people, you could never understand racism unless you talk to, listen to, and believe black people. You have to understand that racism isn't always intentional. And so I think we need to take another opportunity to listen and believe people.
Just to comment, the plan is that their ARPA report will be available for the council meeting on the 26th. It's something that was requested earlier and Paul and his staff are working on getting that report ready. Okay, Anika?
Thank you, yes. So in addition to what Alicia just said, for those of us who will attend the ADA meeting tomorrow and looking at the email that we received, including this Human Rights Commission report, could we please, I believe that there are a few attachments missing. Could we please have them all before tomorrow's meeting? And second, I wanted to say, I know that we, there has been conversation today about Juneteenth and living residents and where I want to acknowledge both former state rep who's no longer with us, Ray Jordan, who's known for bringing Juneteenth celebrations to Western Mass, and also Dr. Melkar Shabazz, who was quite a force in the fact that Juneteenth became a state holiday. I'd like to remind us all here in Amherst, we, it's often popular to talk about how long we've been here, but that the conversation around Juneteenth began before 1893, when Amherst residents joined the Massachusetts 54th Regiment and the 5th Cavalry, making sacrifice for their freedom. Part of why I'm here talking today. They joined over 2,000 Union soldiers and marched across plantations and cities in Texas to declare freedom. And they didn't know at that time, or it wasn't called Juneteenth. They returned back to town, they know what they did, they told their descendants, and it's why we know it today. So again, they weren't treated like the celebrations that we're about to have today. But they knew what they did. And many of us are better for that. They didn't just do that for themselves, but they did that for future generations. And they and only they are what connects the town of Amherst to the history of Juneteenth. So I hope that we all remember that throughout all the multiple celebrations that are really going to light up Amherst this coming weekend and celebrate the holiday.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you, Anika. I, so maybe it may be in the report that we're going to get on the ARPA funds. But my question was just, are there still ARPA funds that businesses can apply to?
So our plan is to show you what has been done with ARPA, the status of all the projects in place. And then there are more ARPA funds to be allocated and a plan for allocating that. So we want to share that with the council, get your feedback on that plan and see where you where you think, get your advice on where you think that should be going.
Thank you.
Pam?
Thank you. I'd like to circle back to the conversation that you've all had with the Cushman Scott School and the speeding and traffic in that area. I would like to ask that some attention be brought to the speeding issue in general. And I have heard rumors that perhaps you've already talked about this. But I have been asking, in whatever way I can, to have it addressed so that we have sort of a collective priority list of problem areas in town that need fixing and that there's some sense of win and timetable for for addressing them. We were talking earlier, it's we understand that there are state highway regulations, there are et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But there are issues in town that really need addressing. And as as the administrators in town, we need to be able to do something. So let's let's get a list of of where it's needed in town and and what our priorities are for getting them fixed. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions? Pam, do you still have your hand up? Okay. If there's no other comments or questions at this time, then I'm declaring the meeting adjourned at 8:48. That's four.